Okay. Good evening. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle. Today is November 30th, 2022.
Okay, first on the agenda is we have two extensions tonight. First one is Evangelos, 111 Hardscram Road. And we are looking for a six month extension.
Yes, hi, members of the board. This is Brian Hopkins. I'm the architect representing Costas Evangelinos. And we are requesting an extension.
Can you explain to us why the extension is necessary?
The, well, the extension is necessary because the, well, the, I'm the second architect on the job. The previous architect, you know, was failing to perform his duties for whatever reason. I don't know the extent of exactly what happened. And so I was retained to continue on with the drawing and produce the documentation set for Mr. Evangelinos. So we had to go through planning again, and we're here requesting an extension.
So how much of an extension do you require? You're still at the drawing stage?
We're still in the drawing stage. It would be nice to have another six month extension. But a three month extension would suffice.
If anybody has an objection, do you ask for six on your application? I will make a motion to grant a six month extension.
Sure.
Can I make that motion?
Sure.
Yeah. You have a problem with that? What are the funny games like tonight?
I'll second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
In favor.
Anthony Giardina. Harvey Bonaparte.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Michael Nolan.
Hi.
Thank you. You have your extension.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Second extension request is clear. What's the place? But I don't see a time on here.
Excuse me, Tony, I don't want to interrupt. I just want to say for the record, Mr. Harvey Bonaparte is appearing virtually pursuant to local law via Zoom today. So I just wanted to say that for the record. Sorry to interrupt.
Do we have anything on that, Tom, about?
In conversations with Mr. Patrick Clare today, he's looking for a six month extension to get started. He just finished going through engineering submissions, and now he's coming to the building department with documentation.
Understood. This has been a long, a long process. He had a lot of engineering to do. I realize that. And it's a difficult situation to get this project going. So I'll make a motion that we grant Claire a six month extension also.
I'll second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Hi.
Anthony Giardina.
Hi.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Michael Nolan.
Hi.
Next is Robbins. One Allison Lynn.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brad Schwartz from Zaren Steymetz. On behalf of the Robins, the applicants, and one Allison. I'm joined tonight by the Robins, although they're undermining on the Zoom, I see. You guys just want to raise your hand and identify yourselves. You can see them on the screen. Also joined by Matt Jones and Rick Simmer from Tapestry Landscape Architecture, the project landscape architects and site designers. There they are on the screen over there. And Jeff Agarian, the project engineer, could not join us tonight, but I wanted you to know that there is a project engineer on the team. And my colleague Jacqueline Cohen is also on the screen with us. So this is an application for four area variances, three of which pertain to patios in the backyard, and the fourth variant is the development coverage variance that pertains to a new circular turnaround driveway that's proposed in the front yard. And that's a reduction from the eight variances that were previously proposed and submitted to your board last month. As I think you all may know, the project previously proposed a pool pavilion with an overhang structure. That itself necessitated four variances. And the reason why it was shown in the location where it was when we submitted to your board is that the ERB advised our client, keep the pavilion out of the wetland buffer, which is what for following our application, the Robins, upon further reflection, decided the pavilion in that location really is not optimal and ideal for the site. So they decided to eliminate the pavilion from the plan, thereby eliminating those four variances, and instead proposing a new circular turnaround driveway in the front that would provide for safe maneuverability and turning movements for delivery vehicles. The current driveway is very narrow, and as Danny can explain, the delivery trucks truly make like 10 point turns trying to navigate the driveway. So that was a change in the plan as compared to previously submitted. There are now four area variances required, and I'll share my screen and pull up the drawing. So first, the patios. And Matt and Rick, please feel free to jump in at any time during the presentation. This is the lawn patio that necessitates a 42 foot variance.
I'm sorry, are you pointing to something?
You not see it?
No.
He has his little cursor showing.
Yep.
This is, this is the lawn patio. Whoop. That's not good. Let me close that and start over.
We could share our screen too, Brad, if that helps.
Go for it while I try to get rid of the highlights.
Okay. Oh, does we, okay. Doesn't seem to be letting us.
He probably has to be, has to stop sharing.
It did.
Did he? Okay.
Yeah. It's not allowing the share. I don't know if you have to allow that, Brad.
I don't think I'm, let me see. Give me one second. I'm no longer sharing, so I shouldn't have to. I'm gonna try this again. Here it is again, clean version. Everybody not see the plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the lawn patio.
But I'm coming.
That's in the rear. Everyone see the cursor around the lawn patio?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And what variances do you require in that case?
So for the lawn patio, it's a 42 foot rear yard setback variant. We're proposing 18 feet where 60 feet is required rear yard. This patio here is
I'm sorry, before you, before you move on, I'm sorry. In the case of the lawn patio, can you refresh our memories? How did you come to place the patio in that location?
Matt, you want to jump in here?
So that was a previously unused sloped lawn area. So the purpose of that was really to have people to be able to congregate up there to look over the pool area, but also to provide some accessibility to an existing play area for the children on the left side of the house. There's a retaining wall and steps that take you from the back of the house up to this called like upper left side yard. And just trying to bring some sort of amenity to an area that was not conducive to any activities, but did only act as a waypoint to get to the playset over there on the left side of the house.
And you couldn't bring it closer to the dwelling?
Um, there's an existing retaining wall. And if you look at the landscape plan, this is, this area is encompassed with landscaping also. So it's not just a retaining wall, a boost on border and a patch of lawn. There's a full composition up there with landscaping. So I was leaving some room in order to allow some landscaping to surround the area.
So I'm sorry, did I understand? Does that circular retaining wall, does that exist today?
The wall that is hatched with those little circles is proposed. But the, the light gray wall that you see and the light gray steps that lead up to our proposed lawn patio are existing. So currently, if you go up those existing stairs, it's a sloped lawn. And then there's some mature plantings along the property line. And it's just providing no function for the homeowner.
Okay, let's keep going.
And here's the rear yard setback line, this dash line right here. So the next patio, moving over, and Matt, I'm happy to stay with the landscape thing if you think that's best. This is the blue stone patio that necessitates a 13 foot rear yard setback variance.
So currently, there's a, there's a patio that's in need of a renovation. And that's what that 49 foot, four inch dimension is to. What I did was, when we go to hopefully renovate this patio area, I centered this hatched area that shows some couches on the home's interior living rooms. So we ended up needing about a 24 inch difference to get it centered on the house.
If I zoom out, that might better show that.
But there is patio in the, mostly in this area already.
And the third patio is this pool patio over here, which necessitates a 14 foot side yard setback. It's a small expansion of the existing pool patio.
Yeah, so this was added because the best sun exposure for some chase lounges around the pool is in this spot. This is in the southwestern quadrant. And we also, a big part of this renovation of the yard was to bring some level lawn areas in proximity to the house because the nature of this property is it slopes from the house down to the woodland. So most of the side yard and front yard isn't conducive to just like kicking a ball around. So we wanted to add a few more pockets of lawn around these existing improvements like the patio and the pool so that the family could enjoy them. So the patio we're adding off the back of the pool there, it's pretty modest for four chairs. And then about a balanced lawn panel behind it for overflow.
You see the landscaping around all three patios. They're all obviously horizontal, you know, site improvements. So, you know, there shouldn't be any adverse impacts to surrounding properties.
I still don't I still don't understand the need for the lawn patio. It seems to me that's an ex-trainee's item that we could get away with not having. And then you'd be requesting, be requesting much less of a variance. And our job is to try to give you the most, the minimum variance possible. So you have to convince me that that's necessary.
We can discuss that.
Yeah. Can I, can I, yeah, can I chime in for a moment? It's Danny Robbins, the homeowner. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. So I'm obviously no expert, and I would be completely deferential to the board with respect to their knowledge and expertise on some of these matters. What I can speak to is just the family who lives there. One of the challenges with our property is if you look, you know, bird's eye view, I think we have two and a quarter acres. And the reality is, is the way that the acreage is set up and the way that the house was built, because it's a little bit funky. I think that the house itself originally was like a carriage house for the adjacent house. And then there was a big addition put on in maybe 2005, 2006 that used the original foundation and then built it in addition to that, right? And so our whole backyard right now is basically this very smushed area. And if you look at this, you know, this drawing on the thing, it's already basically every usable part of our backyard by definition requires a variance. Even the existing patio as it stands looked like they must have gotten a variance back then. So every little tiny thing we're trying to do is like smushed into this one little section in our backyard. The goal, at least as it relates to that fireplace, we don't want to do something and maybe we can get around with making it less patio. But the idea was, is we have this other section, because our properties are sloped. The previous owners already built this big retention wall in these stairs. At the moment, it almost feels like these stairs lead to nothing. You walk up these stairs and there's just empty grass. So what we're trying to accomplish is a nice kind of artistic, you know, architectural technique to tie that random part of the property that we're all staring at into the rest of the yard. And so the architect had come up with the suggestion of making it a fire pit. So that's all we're trying to accomplish. If we can still build a fire pit there and do it in a way that is like slightly less of a variance request, that might be helpful. But that's the objective. And, you know, I think we're just trying to find a way to connect that weird part of the yard to the rest of the house, if that makes sense.
Again, and just to, Danny, thank you just to emphasize that, here's the wetland buffer line. Right, so right off the bat, this part of the backyard is, you know, is essentially off limits. So when you then factor in the shape of the property, setback lines, that's why Danny's saying this is the area of the backyard that's most usable.
Well, if you say you need it, you need it. But for me, I don't, I don't see the necessity of it. Just my opinion.
Yeah. And there would be no adverse impacts associated with the patio. It would be properly screened, and the engineer, he would be installing seepage pits. That would be, you know, post, post approval before building permit to make sure that all stormwater is handled from all patios. Or this one, the lawn patio. But again, there would be no adverse impact resulting from any of these improvements.
Could Tapestry explain the screening plan to us? The, it's a little hard to read.
So currently, in this whole backyard, we have some, our patio areas are in the flatter locations. And then there's a pretty extreme slope. Once we get past the existing wall up to the property lines, and it's all wooded up there. And then the neighbors even beyond go higher in elevation. There's mature trees that are going to remain. There was a handful of spruces proposed up in the corner that was to just plug one hole that was left from just not having the, the old vegetation in place. A lot of the landscaping that's proposed is mostly ornamental to, just to give like definition to each of the proposed areas. But as far as the need for evergreen screening or anything like that, there are no open holes other than where I have those three spruces up in the corner. That was the one spot that didn't have a really dense natural buffer. And then as you go down the yard, there's a huge swath of woodland where the brook is. And it would be almost impossible to plant new plants in those areas because it's so dense already.
Okay, we've heard about patios. What else?
Matt, let's shift to the driveway.
Yeah, so the driveway currently, it took a straight shot off the road. And then it brings you to a, I guess you'd say a turnaround from the driveways, which are undersized. So the far left garage bay has 26 feet to get out. The other garage bay has 32 feet where 35 is standard. So it's a very awkward driveway to get in and out just for daily use by the Robinses. So what we wanted to do was relocate the stem of the driveway towards the front door, provide a circular court so that the delivery people can come in and out easily. Guests can come in and out, drop off for kids and things. And then for the daily use, the existing driveway over by the garage doors would be left for the homeowners and wouldn't be so encumbered by other traffic that might come in and out of the house. It does necessitate a small retaining wall. And then off of this new motor court is the pathway to get to the backyard. Because currently, there's a tall retaining wall on the left side of the house that blocks all access for pedestrians to get into the backyard. So that's why the walkway system along the right side of the house leading to the pool area was proposed just for people not to have to go through the house to get to the backyard.
And so this would result in a development coverage variance of 1,552 square feet or 11%. And again, the engineer would install necessary stormwater facilities to handle the runoff from the increased impermeable surface.
Because it was revised, if you want.
Considered it. I never got it. Did you get the revisions?
I missed them if I got.
I know I didn't miss them.
Yeah. Circulated, I think, earlier this week or last week. With, with this turnaround, the additional coverage. So the original variance was obviously, we got rid of some variances, the side yard, rear yard, whatever the case is. But the coverage has also increased, the coverage variance they were seeking. Originally, I'm not sure what the number was. Yeah, it was 8%, now it's 11%. Yeah, originally, the, the proposed additional development was 1,058 square feet of additional coverage. And now it's 1,552. So it's about. Right.
Which translates from an 8% to 11%.
And, and does this all have to do with the circular driveway?
The increase from the last set of drawings, we had an informal call with the town, and we actually took out a little patio around the pool. But then we ended up putting the driveway, the circular driveway in. The circular driveway was always part of an initial concept design for the homeowners. And once the pavilion was fully removed from the project, they decided we wanted to allocate the budget to a more functional driveway. So that's why we added that back in.
And so the net is this increase of 3% in terms of the development coverage?
Yeah, there is some overlap from the existing driveway to the proposed. Like we're removing about 30 feet of stem and it's getting pulled towards the front door. So I think the net increase, if we look at the Hardscape plan in my lot coverage tab, you'll see while the existing lot coverage on the old driveway versus the new driveway. Existing driveway is 3,576 square feet. The proposed driveway with the circle is 4,437 square feet.
And there'd be no way for the design to come closer to the original?
There's a retaining wall along the left side of the existing driveway with three magnolias that we really want to keep. There's also an issue when people come to the house, they always go to the mudroom door, which is like towards the middle of the house, and really trying to get people out of that area and bring them to the front door. So by rerouting the main stem of the driveway towards the front door, we're hoping that'll eliminate people getting into the mudroom area.
But I come back to, there's no way, there's nothing that you can remove so that we can keep the development coverage at that original request?
I did talk to the homeowners. And if we go to the backyard, that blue stone hatched patio in the center, there's currently a lawn to the left of that. And if that was removed and returned to lawn, we would gain another flat lawn panel right in the back of the house. And they were open to doing that too, because they'd give up the patio, which was about 400 square feet, but they would gain the lawn back, which was key from the start. Flat lawn, because there's just so much sloped lawn everywhere.
So, so that would bring you back to that original request amount?
I don't think it'll be full, but it would bring it down by about half. So maybe go from eight to like nine and a half percent. Brad, I, you'd have to look at the percentages.
Yeah, I mean, the bump up was about 500 square feet. So this is, that's a 400 square foot give back, it sounds.
Okay, so yeah, we're very close.
So is the homeowner on board with making that adjustment?
Uh, yeah, look, I mean, I am trying to be thoughtful and reasonable, and I am fully appreciative that sacrifices and compromises have to be made. I will say, from, from my own perspective, we were pretty focused on creating this pool pavilion in the first place, which the town rejected, or at least the ERB did. So that was a pretty good setback. And we've gone back to the drawing board to try to be flexible and amenable. I'm not particularly thrilled about losing that patio behind my house. As I think you can now see, my point is, is of actual functional yard, even though I have two and a quarter acres, there's just not that much backyard. And so that patio space functionally was very helpful for me. That's where I put a couch and lounge chairs and I have people sit. So I guess I'll, I mean, look, if I have to sacrifice something, to me, that's what I would sacrifice. But I wouldn't be thrilled about it, but I can, I want to also be reasonable here.
Tom, what's your assessment of the application and?
Well, what should be also pointed out is that there is a wetlands permit that needs to be granted for anything in the buffer area to go forward, and that's still pending with the environmental review board. So whenever the board decides, we still need, you know, authorization from that board as well. It's, there are avenues to remove coverage, walkways, stairs, that could result in a give back, even sledderizing things. Some of the walkways are four and five feet width. If they were reduced to a lesser width by linear coverage, you might get back the numbers you need.
But I would also submit, right, keep in mind, under the balancing test, like, what's the environmental benefit of bringing it back down to the 8% that was originally proposed? Like, I certainly get why the zoning board might want to accomplish that. But the benefits of the homeowner to have that patio space for the outdoor lounging and recreational area, and the engineer could design the stormwater to whether it's 8% or 11%, is we would submit that the balancing test still weighs in favor of granting the variances. It's still at 11%, not very substantial, not going to cause adverse impacts to the community or the neighbors. And again, stormwater can be out of, out of commission.
I, I would just say that in terms of development coverage, we probably have three or four, five applications a year dealing with development coverage. So I understand what you've just said, but uh, it's not something that this board deals with often and and there is a difference between eight and eleven percent. Respectfully, I say that. I mean, if there are other concepts, ideas or suggestions that any of the design team has, the board's happy to hear what those are. And and we understand that there are limitations in terms of the site and what can be accomplished.
Yeah, we would have to really talk to the to the homeowners before making any further decisions. We just knew that that rectangle in the back was one spot because it also allowed them to double the existing lawn behind the house. The the proposed motor court isn't oversized. It's actually slightly undersized, just because it wasn't fully necessary to have an entire radius. Like, the trucks will still have to do a little two-point turn, but they won't have to do a ten-point turn anymore. And for the most part, the pathways are four feet. I find like a three-foot pathway is just not enough. You can't even like walk side by side on a three-foot pathway. But if if we spoke to the homeowners, the the right side pathway could be another area to try to cut back on coverage.
I just put this out for consideration. It seems that the board is not really in favor of this. Or I'm not speaking for anybody particularly, but the sense I'm getting here is there's a little bit of a conflict of whether whether it's we're in favor or not. And I know I did not get the revised uh, application that was, that we just found out tonight was set down. And I don't think every member of the board got that revised application either. My suggestion would be to go back to your client, do the best you can to reduce whatever you can reduce, give us a more clear uh, understanding of what the final application would be. Go back to us for consideration and we should take a vote on it. I would be hesitant to take a vote tonight because I don't want to see you denied in for an application that can be worked around and can be approved in the in the future. And I'm only speaking for myself. I don't know how the rest of the board members feel. But I'm I am a little bit unsure of what we're doing because of so many changes.
And and sorry to interrupt. With that being said, it might even make sense if you guys would suggest. There are obviously some wetland issues here. It might make sense to go to the ERB and see how they feel about coverage, how they feel about some of these issues, and then have the applicant come back here. Uh, if there's any mitigation measures in terms of wetlands that are considered, right, because that is an additional issue, given the the wetland buffer being so far into the property.
In terms of process, would we generally be granting the variances and then it would go to ERB? And then if there were issues, it would be returned to?
You you could, you could do it conditionally, of course, or or I think, you know, going to the ERB first and then seeing what they have to say, almost getting like their second opinion, let's say, and then coming back. It it also depends how the dates line up, right? But maybe the dates line up where they get the ERB comments and they say, okay, we've reduced coverage. They come back here and maybe obviously conditioned on ERB approval still, but you have a better picture and maybe some of these concerns uh, go away at that point.
Might be better all around to do that, yeah.
It it does this, does this particular committee meet again in December or do they not have a December meeting, given the seasonality and the holidays?
We do, we do meet December.
Okay, because I think we're supposed to be going in front of the ERB on December nineteenth. So from a timing perspective, it may make sense to do that and then come back in front of the zoning board with, you know, we can sharpen our pencils and make some tweaks on the margin to try to be accommodative regarding some of your concerns. I I will just reiterate, I mean, you know, being a resident in Newcastle, to me, I I, and the town has been wonderful. I will, you know, I want to tip my hat to you guys who've been very accommodating. Every time you've had questions, Tom and Dennis and a lot of the folks have really been responsive. And so we appreciate that. I know that we originally submitted our permit request back in May. Um, and you know, now we're coming up on your end and I appreciate that there's some complexities and nuances. I just want to reiterate, I, at least from our perspective, I don't think it, we felt like we made some last minute switch. And I'm so sorry to hear that the board didn't receive our updated renderings. I thought we sent that. Maybe it got lost in the mix. We were just trying to be responsive to the ERB commentary. So it really forced us to really go back to the drawing board, hence the changes. Um, but at the end of the day, the big picture is still the big picture. We're just trying to modify and improve our backyard, which is a very awkward, frankly, smushed and elevated experience. And we're just trying to make it more cohesive and usable. Um, and really, the enhancements at the end of the day are really mostly on the margin. We're just tweaking the patio that already exists and doing a few small changes, especially when we got rid of the pavilion. So I'm really confident that when we show that to everybody in the upcoming December meetings, hopefully the vision is a little bit more apparent to everyone. And I don't, I just want to make sure that point came across, so.
Okay, well, I think our meeting will fall after the ERB meeting during December. So you will have the benefit of hearing whatever it is they have to say, and then this board can deal with the result.
That's certainly fine. And I would encourage the board, if you would like to conduct a site visit and come out and see exactly what Danny's describing, you're all welcome to come out, whether individually or we could coordinate a formal visit group through staff, happy to facilitate that as well.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
All right, we will see you in December.
See you next month, yes.
Very good.
I'll make a motion that Robbins' application be continued to next month.
One second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardina.
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Michael Mullin.
Aye.
To the next one?
Yes.
Next one is Waterhouse. Waterhouse.
Hi, everybody. Tim Leonard, architect with my partner, Mike Leonard, and the Waterhouses, Jennifer and Larry here tonight. And if you allow me to share my screen, I'll walk you through what we're asking for tonight. So this property had been in front of you guys back in two thousand twelve and certain variants were granted, including some rear yard setbacks and development coverage. But then, you know, that was two thousand twelve and in two thousand fifteen, some other work was done on the property that involved some patio work and a trellis. And unbeknownst to our clients, they, you know, they kind of slipped through the cracks as far as getting a permit. So we're here tonight to hopefully legalize these structures and and offer the board what we think would be a good solution to get a positive feedback from you. Uh, the areas in question on this property are the shaded gray areas here. The pool is one of the things that received a variance back in two thousand twelve. This garage was always existing at that rear yard setback of almost thirty feet. Uh, so these are, these squares here, rectangles, represent little flagstone uh, flush to the ground pads that are actually underneath Shays' lounges. This is a freestanding patio that's between and on center uh, with the garage and a trellis work that's over here on top of the stone patio. And this area back here is actually a little stone wall that I believe was part of the structure was there back in two thousand twelve. But the fact that a gas barbecue was added into it creates the need for a variance for that as well. So the four rear yard variances we're looking for are to these flagstones, this stone wall, this patio on grade, and this patio on grade. I'm going to just show you a little bit more about the property and how it relates to the neighbors. Uh, the aerial view here, you can see there's the pool, there's the Shays', patio. And you can see there's a tremendous amount of landscape buffering between these structures and any adjacent properties. And in addition to that, the properties here to the east sit about fifty feet below the elevation of where these structures are. Here are like four fifty-eight elevation and down here are like four oh six. So it's it's pretty far down. Nobody, nobody but the Waterhouses can see these structures. Um, here's a kind of a different kind of a view to give you a kind of a rough idea of how everybody relates. Again, here's the pool on center with this trellis structure. There's one patio. The little Shays' lounge is here and tucked away over here is where that barbecue area is. So going back to, you're so lucky to have a second development coverage in front of you tonight. I know how rare that is. And actually, we were surprised that we're going to be dealing with it. Uh, when we, when we knew, we saw these structures, we knew there was going to be a rear yard variance ask. So I requested a new survey get done. And lo and behold, when we did the actual development coverage calculations, and you can see we've broken down each individual piece throughout the property, and we added it all up, and it came out substantially higher than what was granted back in two thousand twelve. And I even had the surveyor independently verify these numbers, and we're both in agreement of what they are. So the combined area of these structures that were built in two thousand fifteen adds up to about eight hundred and seventy-eight square feet. But we wound up with uh, a development coverage that put us pretty far beyond uh, what was permitted back then. You can see the numbers are here, that they actually wound up at um, about sixteen three twenty-five, where the permitted is thirteen nine eighty-eight. And back in two thousand twelve, a variance was granted for fourteen five sixty-six. So what we're actually asking to do is to bring the property back into compliance with the development coverage that was granted in two thousand twelve by removing a substantial portion of the driveway. Um, apparently, what may have happened was they had, they had offered to remove sections of driveway in the previous site plan that we saw. And I just don't know that they removed enough or any of it. I wasn't around then, so I don't really know what happened and why it got through that far because it was still over. But, you know, today we have to fix it, and this is the proposal. They have this turnaround area over here. And it adds up to, if we remove the entire amount, we're gaining back seventeen hundred and sixty square feet that could be turned into lawn area and also make a huge reduction of impervious area on the property. So it'll be, you know, much better for for the grounds and all. So um, uh, I'll switch one second here. Just to give you an idea again of what everything actually looks like here. Uh, this is the approach from the, from the front of the driveway. And as you get into the backyard, uh, here's the edge of the pool coping here. This is one of the little patios. This is the patio adjacent to the garage, which actually has, behind that door, there's a little powder room, which serves nicely to work as a changing room for the pool. So it kind of made sense in what they did. They just unfortunately didn't go about it in the, in the right way of doing it permitted first before, before asking for these permissions. Uh, it turned out to be a beautiful space. It really complements the architecture of the house and and the garage and the yard's certainly just beautiful place to to be. It's very private. And like I said, nobody but the Waterhouses can really see this. And that's what I have for you tonight. If you have any questions for me or the Waterhouses, we're certainly willing to answer them.
I I'm just questioning, you removed the driveway, you still need a development coverage?
Yes. So like I said, the, the addition of these spaces here in two thousand fifteen added about eight hundred and seventy-eight square feet, which would have put it over what was permitted in two thousand twelve anyway. But somehow another eight hundred square feet and change wasn't removed back then. So we have to remove a good amount of that to get back to this number here and ask for the five hundred and seventy-seven square foot variance, which is one square foot less than what you granted in in twelve.
Just architecturally, is the width of the driveway near what I think are the front steps where where becomes twenty feet, where most of the driveway is fourteen feet or less? Is it necessary to be twenty feet at that?
Well, I think that it leaves, to me, I think it's nice that someone could park here and drop something off and someone else can still pass by to be able to get to this garage back here. So I think it serves a pretty valuable purpose in this case, considering, you know, we are, we're taking away a huge amount. I think that to leave this still provides a good thing. So someone doesn't have to always come up here to turn around and go back out. So I think, I think it makes sense.
So if I, if I understand correctly, I think your previous development coverage, the board gave you fourteen five sixty-six?
Yes. I have that resolu, you guys, I think it was part of my packet that we submitted, but it's uh, it's right here.
It's hard to tell from, from the drawing, Tim, but there seem to be a lot of steps in the back, leading off of patios and and seemingly not always with with a destination. Maybe that's not the case, but.
So there's a lot of ups and downs in this backyard. A lot of these patios are at different levels and um, now, these steps kind of wander up into a yard area here. These steps kind of meander around this patio here. But I believe they were all pre-existing before the Waterhouses ever bought this property. So this, this area here was just part of a landscape design or something. And clearly, these steps help lead you down into the backyard pool area.
Is there anyone waiting on the line with their digital hand raised to be heard on this matter? Guys in the back? No?
No, no hands are raised.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion, we close public hearing?
One second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardina.
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Michael Mullin.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that the Waterhouse application for sorted variances and development coverage variance for the following be approved. There was patio with pergola with a variance of twenty-seven feet. There's a patio requiring a variance of seventeen feet. Patio with a barbecue requiring a variance of forty-three feet. And flagstone pads requiring variances of thirty-two feet along with development coverage of five hundred and seventy-seven feet. This is a property that has undergone a number of changes dating back approximately ten years. We're here this evening to legalize these new improvements. The applicant, his designer have been thoughtful in their approach to this design. They have made the accommodation of removing section of the driveway to limit the development coverage variance requirement. the development coverage variance requirement. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means or methods. Some of the variances are substantial, though there is no impact on neighbors. No neighbors spoke in opposition to the application. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. The alleged difficulty in this regard is self-created. All of the work is complete?
Except for removal of the driveway.
Okay. And how long do you require to accomplish that?
Larry, sometime this spring?
That would be simple enough, yes.
Yeah.
So you would start the work certainly within the next six months?
Yes.
And be finished easily within one year?
That should work.
Yes, yeah.
Hold on a second.
Chairman Cooper?
Aye.
Anthony Giardina?
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Michael Mullin?
Aye. And we should ask our final survey as well.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you, board. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next is Schleifer. How did I do on your name? Did I butcher it pretty well?
Schleifer.
Schleifer, okay. I did butcher. Excuse me for that.
It's okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. I'm Justin Schleifer, and I have my wife, Kate Schleifer, with me as well. You know, we appeared in person tonight. This is a very personal matter to us. And also, as I think you know, we're here representing ourselves. You know, I think possibly an unusual variance to be requested. And certainly, in seeing and hearing what everyone else is going through tonight, definitely something I think that the board probably doesn't have a lot of precedent with. So we're here tonight to request a variance to allow us to maintain four dogs. And forgive me if I'm getting emotional in, in speaking about it. It's something where I grew up in, in Westchester and Briar Cliff and Huston, and spent a lot of my time in Newcastle. And always thought it would be great to raise a family here. And fortunate enough to, to meet my wife, and she was willing and amenable to, to move here with me. And we did so about two years ago. And before doing so, we, we were, yeah, excuse me. Before doing so, we read through the, you know, what we could find through the town rules and the, the requirements. And it seemed to us that there was not necessarily a specific requirement around the, the number of, of dogs that someone might have. So, you know, we thought we had done our diligence prior to, to moving to the town and have since done so. And we do have four dogs. I think, we didn't bring any visual aids with us, but I know you have the packages in front of you. And, you know, we've laid out for you, I guess, the, the fact that although I think, you know, even if our, our dogs were just pets, that it should still be something worthy of consideration for the board. But our dogs are, at least three of them are also show dogs. My wife is a professional dog groomer, and, and is very active in the show community. And also kennel clubs for the, the various breeds of dogs that we have. We have a fully fenced in yard for the dogs. There's no access outside the house that is not fully fenced in. And I believe that you've also received possibly a few letters of support from neighbors or other, you know, concerned citizens. So I guess, you know, at this point, maybe it is worth opening up the questions that you might have for us.
So how, what is it, how did you come to become aware of this circumstances requirement, this limitation?
Yeah. Honestly, I, I can't say with certainty. It's, I guess, my belief for understanding that there may have been a neighbor who submitted a complaint to the town in some capacity. And in so doing, the town contacted us and let us know that this was potentially a requirement and something that would need to be addressed. All of the dogs are registered with the town as well.
Other than exceeding the three dog limit, would there have been any reason for a neighbor to have brought this to the attention of the town?
Not to our knowledge. And again, our, our property is fully fenced in for, for dogs. None of our dogs have ever gotten out of the, of our property or anything.
Is there excessive barking?
Not, not at all, no. And I believe even if you review some of the letters that were submitted from, from our neighbor at least, you know, he can indicate for you some of the information about, at least his opinion relates to barking or anything.
Tom, is there anything that you, are you involved at all?
I'm involved because it was a violation
Right.
for having four dogs. But there has been no adverse impact to the neighbor other than the one complaint, and other neighbors have called in forward in their defense. And the applicant has shown a secure surround for this. And in conversation with the dog warden, there is no concern.
Okay.
The complaining neighbor, did they bring up anything other than the, the number doors?
Quantity only. There is no aggressive behavior.
Are the dogs, do you keep them outside during the day than inside at night?
No, they, they go outside to use the bathroom and to play periodically, but they're, they're live indoors.
Okay. I reviewed this very carefully. This is something that doesn't come before us very often, let me tell you.
We tried to find precedent previously and couldn't find it ourselves.
Yeah, nowhere.
You're not going to. And I've reviewed the letters from your neighbors, who have no problem with it. And I, I, I see that you have a very good recommendation from your, your adjoining neighbors and everything. I would like to see you keep the dogs personally. I have a problem granting a variance to keep the dogs, because variances run with the land. And when you move out, the next person could have four dogs that are monsters, and we would have no control over them. What I would like to say, to do, if it's possible, that our legal team will, will figure this out for us, if it's at all possible, is to not grant the variance, but to grant a special use permit that would be under the purview and control of the zoning board, as long as you're there, and which will expire when one of two things happen, you move out or you get rid of the dogs. Okay? If that's possible, I would like to see it going that way. I'm totally against the variance, only because you guys are great, but the, the next guy may not be. And we would be stuck with this. So I'm gonna throw that into the hands of our legal team and let them figure out how we're gonna handle this.
Yeah, we'll have to look into, to the details of that, especially use permit and everything. Right now, we don't have an answer. It's a lot of the dis--
If not, if not a special use permit per se, but something like that.
Yeah.
Where we would have control, it would have a sunset clause on it, and we would not be bound by a typical, actual variance that runs with the land, and the town will be stuck with this forever. We don't want that to happen.
It, it may be possible to have it apply to the particular dogs at issue, you know. That may be a possibility. But again, we'll have to look, we'll have to research the issue, whether that's going to be a possibility. Because you're, you're correct, Mr. Jerry, we can't apply it only to, you know, this particular property owner. But there are ways to limit it that we would have to look into in, in this situation, so.
Yeah, because I, you know, quite frankly, from the recommendation of your neighbors, I, I think this would be zero problems with this particular instance. But like I say, if you guys can figure out a way to do it, other than that, I would be on board with it. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I'll listen to what they have to say now.
I know, it says no kennel licenses, but in a lot of other jurisdictions, there's some sort of kennel license where you can apply. And then you have all of your dog, individual dog registrations, vet records all submitted, and, and every dog in your family gets approved or denied based on all of that. But generally, kennel licenses are given to people over X amount of dogs doing such things as what we have.
There are a couple, there are at least a couple in town.
Yeah, so it would just, that way you can monitor what's going on and all that while we are able to maintain the current.
So have they, have you looked into that, a kennel license?
Well, it's not, it's not in this town. It said it on the website. It wasn't granted on the dog licensing page.
Not in a residential district.
Not in a residential district, right.
So.
So that sounds like something we may alternatively need a variance for. We do appreciate the distinction, though, between granting something that would last beyond our, you know, living in the, in the home.
We, we don't have anyone online who wishes to be heard on this matter?
One hand raised.
Can you put them through?
Hi, yes. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Liz Fornari. I'm their direct neighbor. And I just wanted to say that I have no issue with them having their four pets.
Okay, thank you very much for appearing this evening and letting us know.
I do not want them to lose a, a pet, a current pet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll make another motion to continue this matter. Hold us over till we can reconvene in December and, and have the benefit of legal counsel. Okay?
Thank you.
See you next month. Thank you.
Hold on a second.
I second that.
Chairman Cooper?
Aye.
Anthony Giardina?
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Michael Mullin?
Aye.
Next is Vaz. Vaz or Vaz?
Okay, can you put up the screen that has the applicant? It's great looking at Harvey, but... Is that possible? Okay.
Okay, I'm Dan Cantello with Daniel Cantello Architects. And I'm here for Katie Vaz, who's also present. We prepared a landscape plan for their rear yard to have a swimming pool and hot tub installed. And after it was installed, it was discovered, I believe, by the building inspector, that it was built too close to the side property line. So we received a letter of denial, saying that we would need to request a variance. And it's where the setback is thirty-five feet. The pool, or we should just go by the coping, which is closer. The coping is twenty-seven point eight eight feet. And this is based on a recent survey to determine what the pool was actually installed at. So we're asking for a variance for seven point one two feet for a side yard with a required setback of thirty-five.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow. What was the miscalculation? I, I understand what you're requesting now, but what?
It was just that the pool was installed too close.
Right, no, I get it. I'm talking about the measurement.
It was installed--
So you came within seven feet?
Twenty-seven feet. It's installed twenty-seven point eight eight feet from the property line instead of thirty-five.
I see. And, and how did that mistake come about?
I don't know. It was, I don't know.
Is Mrs. Vaz, no?
You saw the permit for this, right?
Yeah.
You had the permit, right? And, okay. So how was it mis-sized on the property?
Well, so it was staked prior to being installed, but it wasn't required to be surveyed as it was staked. The contractor staked it and installed it. And then when we had the survey done to close the permit, that's when it was discovered that the pool was too close to the property line.
So was the the pool contractor, was he working off a prior survey? To, to put, as you said, to stake out the location of the--
He was working off of the plans that were approved.
So somebody measured wrong, is what you're telling us?
Correctly. I mean, he acknowledges that he made a mistake in installing it in the wrong location.
Now, we have, we have these, we have had these come before us, for a matter of eight inches or ten inches, never seven feet. This is excessive. It's beyond the pay. So luckily, you don't have a concrete pool. I'm sure, you have a one-piece fiberglass pool, am I correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
When it came on a truck, they lifted it with a crane and put it in the hole, am I telling, is that correct?
That is correct.
So what you need to tell your contractor is to move the hole, get the crane back, lift the pool up, and put it where it belongs. Because this is excessive, and I, I am totally against it.
Is the, is the hot tub attached to the pool? So like, does the pool come with that hot tub attached, or does that have to be put in, put in after and then attached?
They're two separate pieces.
Okay. So, I mean, that's the reason why zoning boards exist, because, yeah, it's a self-imposed hardship. But I would ask, what is the real issue with a pool that is too close to a property line? And we, the prop, the application to before us had a pool that was too close to a property line. Since a pool is in the ground, it's not even a visual impact. What is the, what is the issue with it being too close to a property line?
Well, you know, before it becomes the town's issue, it should be the contractor's issue, right? The contractor is the one who made the mistake. I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that Mrs. Vaz was even aware of what was occurring. And so you're saying, you know, why should you care, right? And we're asking the question, why can't the contractor correct the error that he made? And, and again, we don't see, I'm just speaking for myself. I've never seen, I've, I've seen other errors, but I've never seen an error as egregious as this in terms of missing the mark by this much.
Another thing to consider is that there's ample property to have installed this pool without a variance as well. We have, we have had requests where, where the properties are restricted in some manner, where they couldn't put a pool in without a variance, and usually it's inches, not feet. But we have had no problem granting those, because we understand certain conditions require that the board has some latitude and, and protect the homeowner from the strict adherence to a law that, that they're not able to because of their property restrictions. In this particular case, there's plenty of property. It's just a, an error by, by a negligent contractor that wants to be bailed out by the zoning board. And I don't think it's fair for the zoning board, and I don't think it's fair for the rest of the residents in this town to have to bear that burden.
Well, just to be fair, for a minute, speaking about the abundance of property, I believe, Dan, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the positioning of the pool was in this location because of the need for a septic relocation area in the other corner of the yard that had been identified. And we had to be a certain number of feet from that area. So there was a specific reason why the pool was placed in this location in the yard. And it wasn't intentionally placed, you know, to be close to the property line. We were trying to place it so that it was within compliance with certain other regulations that we had to adhere to.
But your original permit application, no pool-- But your original permit application showed the pool in the location that did not require a variance and was.
I understand.
A proper distance from your septic, from your septic, uh, future field areas. So you do have this place to put it. It's not your fault, I feel for you. But you have, you had a negligent contractor who should be held responsible for his negligence and not, not put the burden there, not to the zoning board and not to the.
I, I can't foresee any circumstance where the contractor is going to bear the burden of this and come and remove the pool and reinstall it. I, I just don't think that's a reasonable situation or occurrence. I, I, I can't imagine that that will come to pass. I.
So, Mrs. Vaz?
Prohibitive at the end of the day.
Well, um, you know, there's something to be, to be said for people's reputation and their good name. And so I think the board is going to suggest that you, you go back to this contractor and tell them of what has transpired this evening. And that you come back to us next month. And depending on the outcome, you can explain, you or your representative can explain to us the factors that the board should consider in your application. And we'll hold this matter over until next month.
Yeah, it's, it's more complicated, you know, and I know what you're saying, that you want the, the contractor to take the burden, but, it is a pretty complicated move. It's not just a, you know, a bathtub that's being slid on the property because the hot tub is attached and obviously the piping, it's, it's.
Okay.
Prohibitive at the end of the day. It's not.
Okay, I, I would just say.
If not, please.
You know, we're, we're not just going to have this kind of conversation where you tell us it's complicated. You, please come back to us next month and go into great detail to explain to us why it's complicated, what your contractor has said. If you want to bring your contractor and have him appear, that is up to you. But we need more of a rationale if we reconsider this. The board is held to certain standards in terms of granting variances. And that certainly holds true in this case.
You know, and I, you know, you're, you see variances every month, some of you for many, many years, which adds up to a great number. And, you know, in my career, I've asked for many variances over 35 years. And I've never had a board pushback on seven feet. You know, you, you said you've had precedents where someone has said one foot, two foot, whatever it is, but a seven-foot variance is, that's a really small amount to ask for. And, and I'm sure you grant variances every month that are greater than that. So I'm, I'm really shocked that you would, you would take the stance that a seven-foot variance on a swimming pool is considered too great to grant.
And maybe let me just ask the question in a, in a different manner, you know, with, with due respect to the board. If we had come to the board with the intention of placing the pool and requested a seven-foot variance at the beginning of the permit process for some reason or another, and we had rationalized that with the board at that time. You know, would, would there be a different approach versus the fact that the contractor obviously made a mistake in placing the pool? I, I'm just, I'm curious whether it's because there was a mistake in the process or if it's the true nature of the variance. And it seems to me like those items are being conflated.
Okay, the board has to consider five factors in granting any variance. And so we need to move on this evening. We would ask that you come back next month and have your architect explain those five factors to us and why we should consider them in the event you're not able to get your contractor to make right on his mistake.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Do we have someone on the line who wants to be heard? You're not, you're not here on this. No hands. Okay, thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Rodriguez. Nineteen Heathco Drive.
Good evening. My name is Michael Sarignano. I represent Maria and Michael Rodriguez, who live at 19 Heathco Drive with their children. Their house sits on just over one acre or 43,190 square feet in an R1A zoning district. I believe they have somebody here from Hudson Engineering with us, the project engineers.
Evening.
Michael Stein.
Michael Stein with Hudson. How are you?
Thank you, Michael. So we appeared before the board tonight to request one variance, a single variance for our proposed development coverage. Allow Michael and Maria to construct the winged round new pool and patio for their family. If we could put the site plan up on the screen, either Michael or Jack. Okay, great. So as you can see, the, the pool is designed to be set directly behind their house in the backyard and will not extend either north or south, right or left, beyond the foundation line of the house. And no setback variances are needed. We're well within our, our setback. So again, we just need a single variance because of the development coverage. Our, our building coverage is, is well within limits. We're 25% below the maximum allowed for building coverage. So this is a, a, a unique situation where it's strictly the development coverage. The proposed pool and patio will increase our development coverage by 2,274 square feet. The proposed development coverage, when we're done, will be 11,559 square feet when 8,785 square feet is the standard. But currently, the existing conditions at the house, when Michael and Maria bought it, already exceed the maximum by 497 square feet, current development coverage being 9,282. We're proposing additional 1,777 square feet. I'm gonna ask Michael to just point out the, the new impervious surfaces that are triggering this development coverage variant.
If I could share my screen, I can bring up, we did a breakdown of where the impervious coverages are.
So the original presenter needs to stop presenting.
Okay.
Are you seeing?
Yes.
Okay, so on the left side, we have a breakdown of all the existing impervious areas. Our total square footage is 9,282 square feet. That breaks down, um, and that, that breaks down into 4,319 square feet for the driveway and parking area and walkways. 1,062 feet for the existing rear patio terraces, or patio terrace. And 276 feet for the existing, whether it's walls or, or other amenities that, that may be there. But it really comes down to the walls. And the proposed condition on the right side, there's the additional 496 square feet, which includes the, this walkway here, the walkway over on this side, and these, and this, these stone walkways here. We have 960 square feet, which is the, the amount covered with the new terrace that extends around here. 936, 938 square feet for the footprint of the pool. And then there's 152 square feet, additional walls and also with the, oh no, the 938 includes the, the pool equipment as well. With the addition of the proposed bar, the grill and the, um, those two, those will add up to additional 157 square feet for the, all other structures. And so again, in total, we have an increase of 2,277 square feet on the site of impervious area.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
So we looked at the driveway, if anything could be eliminated there, but the house sits well above the street level. And the driveway is a bit of an incline, so there's, there's nothing there that we could reduce. None of the immediate neighbors on, on three sides have, have responded to the public notice. One, but one, Randy Hutchins, who's at Nine Stockbridge Road, that's the corner of Heathco and Stockbridge, wrote a note or a letter to, an email to the board, writing to express her support for the Rodriguez Pool Project proposal. The, uh, just going quickly through the five standards, there will be no undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Your, your board is, I'm sure, familiar with, with the large open space area behind the Rodriguez and the properties to the north and south, because our next-door neighbor, I think about a year ago, had come in for a variance. So there's, there's, there's nobody to the immediate rear of the pool in the house that's going to be impacted. The benefit sought by this young family to have a pool for the kids cannot be achieved by any other method other than the variance because of the, the development coverage standards in Newcastle. The amount of the variance is, is numerically large. I, I have to concede that. But the pool is a ground-level structure and it, it, it not only adheres to all setbacks, but it exceeds all setbacks. And again, it will not have any impact on neighbors. As, as you board members know from experience, some, sometimes a small variance can have a tremendous negative impact, while a large variance can have little or no impact. And I, I'd say that we're in the latter category here. On the fourth factor, it's not going to have any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. In fact, Michael, Michael and his team at Hudson have developed a stormwater management plan that is, is going to be a huge improvement to capture stormwater. I think he's got eight cul-de-sac recharger chambers designed. So this is, the net result is going to be, from a stormwater point of view, is going to be a great improvement and better control of stormwater at the site by reason of the installation of the pool and the related stormwater improvements. And lastly, the alleged difficulty, I don't believe is self-created, as the house and the pre-existing non-conforming as to development. So for all those reasons, and in the absence of, of any neighbor objection, and frankly, there'd be no impact, adverse impact on neighbors, we would ask that you grant the variance so that the Rodriguezes can have their pool.
Could I ask about the, the driveway itself? I know you spoke about it.
Right.
The, the way that it's configured down by Heathco with the rather large step-off area and then a jog and, and then a steps, two sets of steps to get up to what I presume is the front door.
That's correct.
And I recognize that that was there, I guess, when you, I mean, you know, when the home was purchased, and it's not something that you'd be anxious to, to change. But given the, given the overage and development coverage, it just, it seems wasteful in terms of the, the area that it provides. What does it accomplish in terms of the size of that first platform that takes you then to the steps to the right?
Okay, as I said, yeah, and if Maria and Michael are tuned in, you can.
I can bring it up.
You can chime in, but as I said, that driveway is fairly steep. And, and in that area that you're referring to is really important because, you know, visitors will, will, will pull into that area and enter the front door, walk up the steps to the front door. Michael and Maria, are you on?
Yes, it's not displayed.
Yes, the plan is up.
Yes, okay.
So that's why, that's a very important feature.
Right, I mean, I mean, I'm not qualified to redesign it and I, but, but as I look at it, the, the area that I guess is at, at ground level, you know, it's a rather large area before you get to the steps. Then, then you could argue, you, you obviously need the steps to get to the next elevation and the, and the walkways are what they should be, but.
Well, and we need a turning ability too, because the cars will pull in there, they'll visit, enter through the front door. When they come out of the front door, they, they're able to back up the driveway a little bit and then pull forward back out to Heathco Drive.
And then just, if I could ask about the pool equipment room. So that seems to be rather large. What is?
Uh, I'm, I'm not following the room. There's a proposed pool equipment patio area.
Oh, it's a patio area? I'm sorry.
Where pumps and filters will be installed.
Is that the minimum size that's required for that equipment?
It's, it's about 60 square feet. So they're, they're keeping it as small as they could.
Okay.
And we also have the, right in that area is the same as where the gas meter is, as well as other equipment. So that's, that's why I'm trying to place it in that area.
Yeah, that, that area was laid out by the pool company, I believe, Shoreline Pool.
Yes.
Never to be trusted.
And I, I don't know if this, this view will give some understanding of the area. So that's a basically a bird's eye view looking up of the driveway coming up, the courtyard in front of the garage. And so all the way to the right of the house is where the pool equipment would be going.
Can you open that view a little bit, Michael? Expand it and show them what's behind, or the fact that nothing's behind it? All right.
So I would do the street view, but the street view is too out of date compared to the age.
Can you give them a sense of the change in elevation from street to the?
From the street, you're approximately elevation 258. At the garage, you're up at 369, so approximately 11-foot difference.
So this driveway is probably pushes the, towards the limit of, of the change of the grade, right? allowable grade?
I don't have a, a cat drawing open where I can take measurements of distance, but it is on a steep route.
Right, but this shows you, this photo shows. Right, but this shows you, this photo shows you that we're going to locate the pool pretty much right where right at the end of that existing patio area.
Right. Do we have anyone online who wants to be heard on this matter? No.
Well, I think if we needed setback variances or there were, if there were concerns from neighbors, I could understand that'd be problematic, but here it's uh, I believe the tree falling in the forest and nobody's there to hear it.
I make a motion in closed public hearing.
Second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardino.
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Aye.
Howard Doug.
Aye.
Aye.
Would like to make a motion? I can make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I move that the granted variance to Michael and Maria Rodriguez. A a development coverage variance of two thousand seven hundred and seventy-four square feet for the following reasons. First of all, they've uh, they've been thoughtful in um uh, improving the drainage in the property, improving the stormwater uh, maintenance. Uh, the 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 house was already a pre-existing non-conforming uh, development coverage when they bought the house. And the there are no neighbors in opposition to this. Uh, the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefits sought by applicants cannot be achieved by any other feasible method, because if we if we reduce the size of the driveway, it would probably it would make it more difficult given the fact that the driveway is eleven feet elevated from the street. Um, the area variance is substantial, but it seems to be no other feasible way to construct this, they've been thoughtful in the size of the pool equipment, et cetera. Uh, will not have an adverse effect on the impact or the physical environment uh, and the conditions of the neighborhood, there's no one that lives behind them. There are no neighbors uh, who are present who are written in opposition to the variance. Tom, what do we need for this?
We need a foundation survey and a final survey.
Okay, so we'll need a foundation survey and a final survey. And to start six months or when when? Six months to start and a year to finish.
My second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
I I I'm sorry, just um, we use the, Mi- Michael used the correct um, number, right? Because I I think the application has one number, use Tom's number, right? Two seven, two seven, seven, seven. Oh, it's not the
I think I corrected.
Oh, okay, okay.
You don't look at corrections.
Yeah, yeah. Where were we?
We're good, wait, I seconded.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardino.
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Aye.
Howard Doug. Michael Nolan.
Aye. Thank you, have your variance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Given the the earlier matter, we'll be sure that the pool goes in the right place. Thank you.
Uh, let me just give you a little background on that. You you're going to do a gunite pool, I assume?
Yes.
And luckily for you, you're putting the pool right behind the house and it's going to not extend beyond the house structure, because when they don't do that, I normally require a survey before the gunite is shot, because we have had problems where they shoot the gunite and they're off and they go, oops, well, we can't move it, it's gunite. So you luck out on that, you don't have to do a gunite survey, but you do need, you do need to give us an ass bill.
Yes, I can, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Yeah, happy holidays.
You too.
Walsh, eighty-seven DeVoe Road.
Good evening, it's Bill Spade, the architect. Uh, here representing the Walshes, uh, James Walsh is is on the uh, Zoom uh, meeting as well. And uh, he is, uh, he and his wife, Kristen, are the owners of the the property.
Very hard, very hard to be a Packer fan.
Hey.
This season.
They're not dead yet, I think is what Aaron Rodgers said, so.
They're on life support, if they're not dead.
Yeah, I think he's in an alternate universe, but uh, yes, uh, we'll still cheer him on. Um, thank you, so it's nice to be here, good to see you all. Uh, we're here to uh, seek uh, technically three variances for alteration in addition to the home. Uh, I'm going to share my screen and show the um uh, the cover sheet and then the site plan and describe the what we're seeking. Um, first, an aerial view of the of the property. Uh, we're on DeVoe Road, on the south side of DeVoe Road. Uh, the 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 aerial view is flipped around, north is to the bottom, uh, just oriented to the front of the house. Uh, as you can see in the aerial, and then I'll show you on the on the the enlargement of the site plan. The house, which was constructed in nineteen sixty, was built into the front right corner of the property and so is pre-existing uh, non-conforming to both the front yard setback and the right side setback. Uh, and and that's pertinent, because we were we were proposing to do work both on the front and on the right side that then engender uh, the variances are regressing. So the the two principal uh, pieces of the alteration we're in addition, we're proposing on the front of the house, and I'll enlarge this plan a little more. Uh, we're seeking to uh, widen the existing front uh, stoop of the house. Uh, presently, it's a just an exposed landing with steps down to the front. Uh, and I'll show you, I hope will be a photo of the front of the house, which, uh, do you see the photograph here?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, great, so you see the existing front steps and landing in front of the front door. Uh, and a somewhat odd projection of the second floor out over that. Uh, what we're seeking to do is widen the uh, front porch to equal the width of that second floor, uh, you know, uh, you know, overhang, as it were, and uh, give that a nice uh, roof and cover to kind of give it a more pleasant, elegant uh, solution for uh, the front and and also cover the the landing. Uh, so that uh, alteration, I'll flip back to the uh, plan. Uh, you see in the light lines there, the existing landing in the same front plane as the existing landing, widening it uh, to equal that that overhang above and then putting a roof over the top. Uh, we may need to replace the front steps, uh, but we would do that in the same dimensions that they presently are, uh, partly because of the uh, septic tank is exactly, you know, in the realm of where where uh, we can't go any further than than what is already there. Uh, so that in the enlargement of the front porch requires a um, nine, roughly nine foot variance, and we're going to ask for nine point three feet just to be sure, we we we, you know, don't need to come back to you uh, for the variance to the beginning of the steps. And then uh, we need about a uh, six point three foot variance to the face of the front porch. And again, those are uh, the existing dimensions, and so we're 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 not increasing the non-conformity to being in line with it. Uh, the second uh, part of the project is to do additions on the back of the house. Uh, and as you can see in the site plan, the as the right side of the house is into the right side setback, the addition at the rear uh, also extends into the side yard setback. So we need uh, an approximately, uh, we have a thirty-five foot requirement. Uh, we need about a um, I'm not doing my math, I have to tell my uh, six point uh, three foot variance uh, for that um, side yard uh, encroachment. Uh, the addition back here is to the, on the right side of the house, on the first floor is the living room. We want to enlarge the living room there and and kind of more importantly, on the second floor, it's the ma- the master primary bedroom and very, two very small closets that are at the rear of the uh, primary bedroom, and we want to enlarge those to create uh, larger closets. And so that six foot, six and a half foot, as it's labeled there, enlargement at the rear is to add very important functions uh, onto the house. And so uh, that uh, that that enlargement and that encroachment, we think, is critical. Um, that's really the uh, you know, the 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 summary of what we are seeking. Uh, the plans otherwise comply with both building coverage and development coverage. Uh, so we'll go down those counts. And um, we uh, also, I wanted to point out, uh, I don't believe there are any neighbors here uh, to speak to this, they 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 obviously did get notified. The neighbor to the left, uh, we know well, and they were well aware of the plans and had no objection to uh, what was being proposed. Uh, the neighbor, the property to the right, uh, go back to the photograph I showed, you can see that there is a substantial amount of mature trees and vegetation along that right side screening uh, that property. And then the home that's on that lot, that is actually the rear yard uh, of that uh, property and just to complete this uh, part of the uh, uh, you know, information, you can see that home here on the aerial uh, a substantial amount of property uh, between the rear of that home and this uh, property line, and again, with a a good stand of mature vegetation there, so uh, doesn't uh, doesn't seem to have any impact on uh, on that property and um, you know, so that's the conclusion of our presentation. Uh, if you have any questions, certainly, uh, ready to answer them.
Is there anyone on online who wants to be heard on this matter?
No hand.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion in closed public hearing.
Second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardino.
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Aye.
Howard Doug.
Aye.
Michael Nolan.
Aye.
I'll make a motion, um, I move that the Walsh application for variances for the construction of front porch, front stairs, and a rear addition for the expansion of the living room and master bath. Be approved, front porch variance. Bill, I don't know, you were using some fuzzy math there.
We wanted to get a little larger than the than the dimension we're showing, just to be sure we didn't miss. So nine, nine point three feet is the requested variance for the front.
We're gonna, we're gonna make the front porch six point five, the front stairs nine point five and the rear seven feet.
Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, this will, uh, these changes will certainly make for a more usable uh, property, home, part of the homeowner. There um will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, the benefit cannot be sought through other means. The requested variances are not substantial. There'll be no adverse impact on the physical environment and these changes uh, were not self-created. You will have six months to start, one year to complete, and we will need a foundation survey prior to framing. Uh, no neighbors uh, to speak in opposition. For these reasons, I think we should approve.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardino.
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Aye.
Howard Doug.
Aye.
Michael Nolan.
Aye. Thank you, have your variance, Bill.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, have have a happy holiday.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Abad, three fifty Bedford Road.
People would ordinarily pay a lot to have witnessed everything that they saw here this evening.
It's a learning experience, for sure. Good evening, Chairman, your members. Uh, my name is Jorge Abad. I am uh, both homeowner and architect uh, for the proposed addition to to our home, my wife is here, Jennifer Kill. And um, our home at three fifty Bedford Road. And uh, we are here uh, because we'd like to request a a variance uh, or variances on the front yard, uh, a twenty-three foot variance for the uh, for a two-story addition and a twenty-one foot variance for a covered porch. And also a height variance uh, to to renovate uh, the third story attic space in the home. So so the home at three fifty Bedford is a, as you may know, a a historic uh, home, it's a it's a Newcastle landmark uh, registered with the Historic uh, Society and uh, and and uh, Newcastle. Um, so we we've already uh, submitted our plans, uh, first and foremost, to the Landmark Advisory Committee and they they support the our our um, our proposed addition. We've also gone through the Architect Review Board and they've uh, they've also uh, approved our our proposed addition and um, and and what we're looking to do is just minimally expand on the the rear to the residence. And and, you know, the residence was built in the seventeen uh, sixties. It's, you know, it way before uh, the zoning ordinance was in place. Uh, so most of the house is well within the setback, the front yard setback. The home also was built with a with a walk-up attic, uh, which was uh, renovated uh, or or used, you know, with the, uh, when it was built. And renovated subsequently a few times or partially renovated. So we're we're looking to to use that space and renovate it as well. And uh, the the character of the addition is 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 minimal, is is really to sort of complement the home. And also to to uh, as with the previous application to support functions in the house, uh, expand the kitchen a bit. Expand our 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 master suite a bit. And then uh, renovation of the third floor floor space, uh, just to add some family uh, room space and uh, and an office for myself. So that's uh, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Leave it open to to your questions.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
You said, you said a twenty-three foot variance for the for the two-story addition? My numbers, my numbers call for thirty-one foot. You're coming within twenty, twenty-nine feet of the uh.
Mr. Giardino, I believe I may have made an error.
No, I don't think so.
Well, there is
I didn't catch it.
Yeah, there is, um, so so in, there is a uh, a difference between um, when I originally, I think, I think there's, there was a subsequent survey that came in uh, that we that we submitted it with. Uh, I think originally when we made a a request, there was a
So you have revised survey that shows the difference in the numbers?
It did, there was a difference in numbers, but I did, that was what I submitted with my application, actually, the revised numbers.
But the denial letter was based on the original one?
Exactly, the denial letter is based on my building permit application, which uh, which was based on a, on a very old survey.
Ah, okay.
And we we subsequently surveyed the property, actually, we did it um, a couple of months back. Um, just in preparation for for the zoning.
So you need less of a variance than we thought.
I need less of a, it turns out, I need less of a variance, yes. So my apologies for that.
What was that number again for the for the front?
Uh, so the front
The two-story addition?
To the two-story addition, the variance is twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three feet?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's good.
And uh, and then to the covered porch, the variance is twenty-one feet.
Better yet, because I had twenty-seven, twenty-one feet, good.
And my apologies, I should have, I should have included that that difference in in the that change in in my uh, in my letter, but but it was in the application. I'm glad we had it surveyed again.
Yes. And the third story or is is pre-existing, is it, is it finished up there?
It's pre-existing, it was partially renovated uh, by a previous homeowner. Um, and and we understand that she had received the CO uh, for her partial renovation way in back into nineteen seventies.
Oh, okay.
We actually know, know the previous owner. That is correct.
So we're all covered with that sort of problem.
Is there anyone online who wants to be heard on the matter?
Any other questions?
Any other questions? I move to close the public hearing.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardino.
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Aye.
Michael Nolan.
Aye. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll take it. The application of Jorge Abad and Jennifer Phillips, seeking a two, two front yard variances and a third floor alteration. I move that we grant the variance for the front yard, it would be 23 feet, and for the covered porch, it would be 21 feet, and a variance to finish the third floor of existing property, existing house. The granting of the variance will create no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There is no other feasible method than the variance to achieve the benefit to the applicant, the variance. I don't consider them substantial. This is a historic home, and it's pre-existing, probably non-conforming, pre-existing from the 1700s. And granting the variance, there'll be no adverse effect or impact on the physical requirements or positions in the neighborhood. And I don't believe this is self-created. So for those reasons, I move that we grant the variance. Six months to start, one year to finish, and we will need a survey.
Okay.
Certain completion.
Ass bill. Okay, absolutely.
I'll second that.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardino.
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Aye.
Howard Doug.
Aye.
Michael Nolan.
Aye. Thank you. Have your variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Enjoy.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Make a motion, we adopt the meeting minutes for the October 26 meeting?
Second that.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardino.
Aye.
Harvey Bonaparte.
Aye.
Howard Doug.
Aye.
Michael Nolan.
Aye.
Okay, we're off.
There was one other matter.
We're going to do this on, or...
Yeah, we could do it online.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's fine. You received lead agency notice from the board regarding amendment to the zoning code. If the board wants to make any comments, we should just, we should probably, you know, we would have to discuss those on the record and put together written comments of any board members. I would suggest for next month, the board review it over the period, notify our office. If you want to put in any written comments, we can discuss them at the December meeting, and you can approve them, and we could have a draft of them if anybody has any comments. If not, you're not required to comment.
This involves one address? Yes.
The right-of-properity?
Right, okay.
Why is that not spot zoning?
Excuse me?
Why is it not considered spot zoning? It's only one address.
They're looking for a zoning change.
No, I understand that. I'm not against it or for it or anything. It's just that I am only looking at the question, if you're going to take one address and change the zoning, it's spot zoning, it's not allowed.
There are instances where you're allowed to do it in one location. It depends on the circumstances, so, depends on circumstances.
Just ask.
And does, does the, will the code spell out what a hardship translates into, or will it be similar to, if the board were to grant variance, assuming that this all goes through, and we were to grant variance saying that it's not required that the applicant comply?
I think it would be under the same standards as, you know, you look under the five factors.
Right.
And, you know, if there are certain setback requirements relating to that, I haven't looked through the exact change to the zoning. I think it's more allowing certain number of units, or, you know...
It's number of units, decrease in parking.
Right.
Do they have a tenant or tenants? Or this is...
This is all speculation.
Right. I'm sure the developer has proposed it, I think, and, you know, we have a developer that's proposed it, so they're looking to, you know, improve the property that way.
Okay.
Just putting it in the board's minds, you know, they have it, so...
Yep. Okay, we can go off. Thank you.